Seven fifty-one P.M. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I'd ask those that could stand, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve by Mr. Hess. Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it five to zero. Please note for the record that Mr. Salvatore and Mr. Fiorello are absent tonight. Next is our consent agenda. Item number A, approval of minutes. We have regular meeting from May twenty-third, 2019, special meeting from May twenty-eighth, 2019, special meeting from May thirtieth, 2019, and under B, executive session minutes from five-twenty-three, 2019, executive session from May twenty-eight, 2019, and executive session from five-thirty, 2019. Item number C, the enrollment report from June first. D, the school police report from May first, 2019, and the residency truancy report from June first, 2019. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Waters. Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it five to zero. Next is report of the executive session meeting tonight on six-thirteen, 2019. There were no votes taken during the executive session tonight. I need a motion to seal the minutes from the executive session. Motion by Mrs. Waters to seal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it five to zero. Thank you. Next is superintendent's report, recognition of retirees.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you please join me down at the podium, please? We would like to recognize some of our retirees who are here this evening. We actually have a number of people retiring this year, but we have five individuals who are with us this evening, and I would ask them to please come up. Bonnie DeBlois, Linda Ionetta, Maureen Matow, Joyce Palusha, and Carleen Martin. Please come on up. There is many years of experience standing before you. So let me start. I have a little something that, a certificate as a small token of our appreciation, and I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you share this with them as I read just a little something about each one of them. Sometimes we actually get this information right, so I hope it's accurate. So first, Bonnie DeBlois. Bonnie is retiring after thirty years of service. She has held the position of librarian media specialist during that time. Bonnie was first assigned to community school and over the years has worked in all of the elementary schools, concluding her career at BF Norton. Bonnie, thank you for your service.
Linda is retiring after thirty years of service. She began her teaching career as a third-grade ESL teacher at St. Patrick's School, then moved to BF Norton as a classroom teacher and later as an English language learner teacher. Over the past few years, Linda has served as the EL coordinator for the district. Linda, thank you for your years of service. And yeah, we saved this special thing for the end. Joyce Palusha. Joyce is retiring after twenty-five years of service. She held the position of librarian media specialist throughout those years. Joyce has spent her entire career with the Cumberland School Department at the high school. Joyce, thank you for your years of service. Maureen Matow is retiring after twenty years of service. She held the position of librarian media specialist during those years, except for a short period of time working district-wide in the elementary schools. Maureen's assignment has been at the high school. Maureen, thank you for your years of service. Carleen Martin is retiring after twenty years of service. She worked as a paraprofessional, starting in the kindergarten and working in various schools throughout the years. Carleen, thank you for your years of service. So in addition to, we also like to present these, yes, these bags to our retirees, and thank you all for your years of service. We really appreciate it. Thank you all. this evening for their years of service, we have some other individuals who could not be here, and I'd like to recognize them and thank them for their years of service to the district. Kathleen Gibney, the preschool director. Trudy Grow, a grade-two teacher at community school. Leah Dow, a grade-one teacher at Cumberland Hill Elementary School. Pearl Kaplan, the school nurse teacher at BF Norton School. David Rosen, special education teacher at Cumberland High School. And we would also like to thank them for their years of service to the Cumberland School Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, next is report of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. Hess.
Okay, so fiscal did meet upstairs this evening. We did have payment of bills in the amount of one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents. That was approved upstairs on a two-to-zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of payment of the bills in the amount of one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Next is fiscal management subcommittee update.
Okay, so fiscal discussed a number of resolutions which are on the docket further, so in the interest of expediency, we'll address those when we deal with them as a full committee. One note from the business office monthly reports, looking at the fiscal year nineteen budget. Healthcare spending did tip upward in May. We're looking at a total spend for nineteen estimated at about six point eight million dollars. We're at six point three through May. If everything balances out the way it's projected, based on other adjustments we've had to make to the budget, we would have a small surplus of around a hundred and forty thousand. That's obviously very fungible. That number can and does change, so we'll know once we finish out the year. As far as the food services goes, the negative debt currently stands at forty-seven thousand. That's an estimate. We don't have a hard number at the moment, but that's obviously much higher than it's been in years past. And that was most of what we discussed that wasn't related to resolutions we'll deal with later.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Next is fiscal management and subcommittee update. Is there anyone here to give that update? Oh, I'm sorry, policy. No, Mr. Fiorello is not here. Did you have anything in policy?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
We met yesterday, no, on Tuesday, and we did not vote on any of the policies. We did discuss the, let me just make sure I get the actual number of it correct. We discussed the D-two GAZB fifty-four policy and the D-eight financial goals and objectives. But it was just a discussion, and we'll table it till our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Waters.
Thank you.
Next is achievement and communications subcommittee update.
The achievement and communications subcommittee meeting, committee also met on Tuesday night. A main focus of our meeting was Mr. Demana sharing the achievement strategy for the district and specifically how it impacts the kind of staffing that we need to support our achievement goals. A big focus of the achievement strategy is providing support for tier-two students. Tier-two students are students that are on the cusp of proficiency. You know, tier-three students would get intervention services, but tier-two is in the middle. So there are a number of initiatives to be able to provide that kind of support, and specifically at the middle schools. So we talked about that, and we also started talking about the strategy around the elementary schools and the scheduling and where we'll be taking the vision for the elementary schools as well as a starting point. And we'll be having more discussions on both of these topics in the coming months.
Great, thank you. Next is comments from the public. Anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, so they'll have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Michael Kenge, Cumberland Town Council. I just want to take a second, and I know you've got a busy agenda, but I just want to take a second on behalf of the town council to thank the retirees. I understand that teaching is not an easy profession, and you ladies did it with dignity and professionalism, and the town greatly appreciates the impact that you probably will never see that you had on the youth of this town. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Kenge.
Sorry, Tina Fogel, Nineteen Woodhaven Drive. I actually want to speak on new business C, which I understand is going to actually be an open session now, so I'm just making sure that I can reserve the right to talk then and not now.
When you're in new business?
I understand that the employee has reserved their right to have the meeting done in open session.
Have we got noticed? Okay, so they're...
So if you want me to do it now, I will, but I thought it would probably be more germane to do it at that time, but I just wanted to ask permission.
The way it's structured, Tina, is that, the way, I don't know if you can hear me. Anyway, you can hear me.
I can't.
The way it's structured is that public comment would be the appropriate time, given the type of action being taken.
Okay.
So if you'd like to do it now.
Okay.
I don't want to make that, it's not my job, but that would be the recommendation that I make.
That's fine, let's do it now.
And that's, I just wanted to, for clarification, I didn't want to miss out, so I'll be quick.
All right, thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Tina Fogel. I live at Nineteen Woodhaven Drive in Cumberland. I've been a lifelong resident of Cumberland. I'm the product of the Cumberland School System, and I was the former director of human resources for the Cumberland School Department from August of 2012 through October of 2018. In my former role, I've been through many budget cycles. I understand that cuts are required, and that often budget solutions are not accomplished by reducing expenses for items. The money is in the staffing. At the town council meeting on Wednesday, June fifth, 2019, I was saddened to learn of the proposed cut to the human resource department. Currently, the department is made up of a director, a confidential assistant, and a human resource clerk. This department supports all employees of the district, which during my tenure was over five hundred and sixty-five full-time employees and another hundred and fifty part-time employees. By way of background, when I started in August of 2012, the department consisted of myself and an HR clerk. We were both brand-new, as there had been a reduction of staff in the guidance office of the high school, and so the bumping protocol had been initiated. The new HR clerk bumped the longtime HR clerk, causing her to have to move to a school. As I got acclimated to the school department and she and I learned the procedures and protocols being followed, created relationships with the staff, the union, and administrators, and created goals for the growth of the department, it became clear that the department was understaffed. In that first year, I traveled to all the schools and had many meetings with staff where I explained that my vision was to be the customer service department for the school department. We began creating processes and protocols to ensure that we communicated with the employees and that they had all the information that they needed. Then, in October of 2013, we hired a confidential assistant to the director of HR. From October of 2013 through November of 2016, we were a three-person department with particular roles and responsibilities, but ensuring that everyone was cross-trained so we'd have the ability to pitch in if someone needed help or was out sick. While it was not perfect, and there's always room for improvement, it worked. Then, in November of 2016, the HR clerk retired. A conversation ensued between administration and the union as we discussed whether the position should remain in the union or whether all human resource functions were per se confidential. As this conversation unfolded, I was told to wait until January to replace the position, and eventually, due to budget issues, ended up losing that position for the year. I was frustrated, as all the progress we had made as a department, I felt, would be halted. We returned to a two-person department, still handling all the same tasks and issues. I assumed the majority of the tasks of the HR clerk, because the confidential assistant already had her hands full managing bus monitors, crossing guards, and all of her assigned HR tasks. Then, after over a year of advocating for the reinstatement of the position, conversations began in early 2018. I decided that it was not important whether or not the person was in the union, as the real importance was the ability to service our employees effectively and efficiently. The restoration of the position was due to the realization that I was spending countless hours on clerical tasks, while extremely important to the department, but not to the growth of the school department. In July of 2018, we went from a two-person department to a three-person department again. As I transitioned to working part-time while the school department interviewed to replace me, I did not get to fully enjoy the return to being adequately staffed. I did, however, do everything I could to ensure that the proper training and information was provided to the remaining staff so the department could continue to grow. Now here we are, taking a step back. It's important to remember two things. I no longer work for the school department, so I'm not advocating for myself. And costs associated with employees are approximately eighty percent of your budget. The employees of the Cumberland School Department are your biggest and most important asset and expense. Human resource should play an essential role in developing the strategy for the school department, as well as handling employee-centered activities. HR is not about pushing paperwork around and monitoring sick time. Key HR functions involve updating and maintaining job descriptions, hiring and onboarding, training of employees, contract negotiation interpretation, labor relations, counseling employees at their happiest and darkest times, conducting investigations, progressive discipline, evaluations, compliance with state, federal, and local laws and regulations, communicating and administration of benefits, conducting staffing analyses, handing employees who separate from the school department, whether voluntarily or involuntarily, and much more. Along with these important tasks are also state reporting, maintaining appropriate personnel files, maintaining medical files, administering the FMLA program, maintaining the absence management system, and much more. To reduce the already lean department by one person will undoubtedly force the director and confidential assistant to redistribute tasks, reduce productivity, and increase the possibility of mistakes, since they'll be forced to juggle so many varying tasks. I understand that no one likes cuts, and that each department or school will make claims that any cut will affect them. The human resource department, however, affects all employees of the Cumberland School Department. And I want to repeat that, because I think people don't realize that. Human resource is important. The human resource department affects all employees of the Cumberland School Department. All employees deal with HR on a regular basis, and cutting this position will reduce the services the HR department will be able to provide to your most important asset, your employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else still like to speak? Please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Drezick. I live at thirty-four Womsett Avenue in Cumberland. I am currently the human resources clerk for the Cumberland School Department, and I'd like an opportunity to tell you a little bit about my job, as my job is being discussed I wanted to start out by describing a typical day in the human resource office, but as I tried to write it down, I realized that there is no such thing as a typical day in the human resource office. There are tasks that I complete on a daily basis, but that is only a small sampling of what I do. My daily work consists of handling the ASOP frontline, absentee management system. I input requests for professional development, bereavement, FMLA sick time, field trips, jury duty, and work to secure substitute coverages for teachers that are out absent. I support the assistant superintendent's office and the curriculum coordinators by posting and modifying professional development days and reporting on substitute coverage in addition to backing up student registrations in the assistant superintendent's office as well. I calculate and enter a crew time for all employees. I review absences to collect medical documentation as described in both collective bargaining agreements. Last summer, I completed an absentee management certification course, which has allowed me to support the superintendent and the human resource director in providing the necessary information to deal with chronic and recurring absentee issues with both certified and non-certified staff. I send and process FMLA paperwork, including the designation forms. I'm responsible for tracking whether the employee is taking leave under FMLA or the Rhode Island Parental and Medical Leave Act, and posting this time in ASOP. I verify and process loss of prep forms and excess class size forms. I create and maintain a spreadsheet for each school with all BCI-checked volunteers, which is updated daily. I process working papers for Cumberland School Department students and students who go to school out of district but will be working in the town of Cumberland. I support the superintendent's office by updating personal recommendation lists and updating supporting documentation. I maintain and update teacher certifications, seniority lists for both CTA and ICSI, as well as sick bank reporting for CTA and ICSI. I track ICSI ninety-day probation periods for new employees. I create and fill in all substitute teacher timesheets. I manage substitute assignments and work with the building administration to find long-term and emergency subs for their buildings. I'm responsible for RIDE reporting, which includes verifying that teachers are certified appropriately for their position, helping with emergency certifications, and that staff is appropriately reported with the correct school and position. I'm also responsible for the non-certified staff reporting. These reports are crucial to the operation of the school department and are required by both the Rhode Island Department of Education and the federal government. That is just a snapshot of the important tasks I complete on a daily basis. However, one of the things that I love most about my job is that every day is not the same. I am the first line of defense for employees of the Cumberland School Department. There are days that I talk to employees who have lost a loved one. I help guide them through the process of using their bereavement time, and I am a shoulder for them to lean on. I am the person that greets an employee who comes in with a medical note after they or their loved one receives a life-changing diagnosis. I answer questions, offer a quiet place to sit, and lend a compassionate ear. The employees are the backbone of the Cumberland School Department, and it's important that we provide the necessary resources to show they are valued and supported every day. I thankfully get to be one of those resources. The elimination of this position will negatively impact the operations of both the human resource department and the business office. The workload described to you will fall onto the remaining staff in the department, who are already carrying a full workload. My coworker takes care of benefits administration, workers' compensation claims, injury reports, as well as managing, hiring, training, and timesheet processing for over fifty bus monitors and crossing guards. She also handles retirement inquiries, unemployment claims, and completes verification of employment forms. The reduction in staff could result in absences not being recorded correctly and attendance issues not being reported out. The substitute payroll and unpaid reports could be delayed, causing a direct impact to the payroll office, which could mean unnecessary and costly adjustments to payroll. Workers' compensation claims and benefit adjustments could be delayed, which can lead to financial implications for both the employee and the school department. The department cannot run efficiently without the appropriate staffing. Please do not send the message that the Cumberland School Department employees do not matter or are not important. The employees are one of your biggest assets and should be supported with a complete human resource department. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Marian Verone, and I've been the confidential assistant to the director of HR for nearly six years now. First two and a half years in the HR office, the support staff included, and an HR assistant and myself. Second two and a half years in the HR office, support staff consisted of me. During that two and a half years, I can confidently state that although I was often told not to, I worked a minimum of at least fifteen additional hours per week. I would come in early, I would work my lunch, and I would stay late. It was the only way to get this job done. I would not even attempt to calculate the additional hours that Mrs. Fogel worked beyond her regular workday during that time. It was difficult, to say the least, and we did what we could to get things done. That pace is not sustainable, nor is it fear to those working in that situation. During the past year with Mrs. Drezick as the HR assistant, the workload has not only been tolerable, but we have gotten to tasks that we never had enough time for. We continue to be busy throughout the day and spend a significant portion of our day greeting visitors to the building, accepting all deliveries to the building, and notifying those who need to come get their deliveries, and ensuring that those from the general public leave the building, having been serviced in some way, even if they are not able to conclude their business with the appropriate department. Mrs. Drezick has provided you a comprehensive list of HR activities. However, on any given day, we could add many more tasks to that list. I think that most people understand that an organization is highly functioning when it has a solid infrastructure. Human resources is an integral part of that infrastructure, and what I like to call the heartbeat of the organization. In many organizations, there are various departments within that HR department. Here, the functions of those departments are covered by the HR director and the current staff of two. Please consider that your HR department is actually your personnel office, benefits administration office, safety and health office, recruitment and hiring office, policy formulation office, workers' compensation, employee and labor relations office, absentee management and attendance control, the training office, customer service office, and the transportation employee management office, which is what I call the management of the approximately fifty bus monitors and crossing guards. And anyone who's had to work with our bus system and with Durham, they know that they could be quite a task to do this. I do all the recruiting, the hiring, advertising, training, assigning the monitors, and the continual timekeeping duties throughout the year. From late July through October, these duties monopolize my time, at a time that is busiest in our office for ending out one year and beginning the next. I hope that you understand the importance of being able to do all of these duties efficiently and timely with attention to detail. This is not easily done when the HR director has a staff of one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next order of business is public hearings. Reading of amended policy D-two, which I understand is tabled, and D-eight, which is tabled as well. Next is the reading of a new policy, the second reading. We'd like to read into the record I-seventeen, the new homework policy. Anyone have any comments in regards to the new homework policy? There are none, and I need them to move, we'll move on. Thank you. Next is the presentation of, from Cropper, GIS, McGibben, demographic study that was done for the Cumberland schools. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, we, as you know, were asked, or it was recommended by the Rhode Island Department of Ed as we were going through our planning process for the eighty-three-million-dollar bond referendum. It was suggested that we do a detailed demographic study to get a better understanding of our enrollment projections over the next ten years. So not only is it important for us to know how the school student population will change over that time, but one of the things that I think is really important for us is to know which areas of town are we projecting will increase in population, and how do we accommodate the children who will be living in those homes, you know, by putting them in the school closest to their homes. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Jerome McGibben, Dr. Jerome, Jerome McGibben, who we have had the pleasure of meeting with already. He has reviewed the report that he has compiled using... using an interesting amount of data to make his report. So I'd like to introduce Dr. McGibben to all of you. And he's gonna, he has a presentation to share, and he will be able to answer any questions. I learned a lot from the short time that we had with Dr. McGibben. So I think you'll be impressed with the work that he has done. Dr. McGibben.
Welcome. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, can you hear me fine like this? Okay. Couple things before I start, not to put too fine of a point on it. These are forecasts, they're not projections. Those are two different things. A projection is where you take a past trend, usually year-to-year survivorship, second to third, third to fourth, over like a five-year period, create an algorithm, and literally project out in the future very quick, very easy, and until about the mid-1990s, about the only method you really had for enrollment work. The problem with a projection is they're almost never right. Because the only way a projection can be correct is if what's happened over the last five years replicates itself over the next five or 10, which almost never happens. These are forecasts, two-step procedure. The first thing we do is a full population forecast of the entire population, zero to four, 85-plus, male, female, for each one of your attendance areas, some at the district level. Build its own fertility, mortality, migration model. Look at household data, composition, owner versus renter, housing tenure, sales, any variable we can get our hands on to help build these local, specific models. We don't use anything regional or statewide, generalized. It's all built specifically for the Cumberland School Department. The results of that population forecast then drives an enrollment forecast. Okay? The second thing I want to point out is, there's my pointer, yeah. Don't let that Rock Hill, South Carolina fool you. I moved down there from here. I used to live up in Gardner, Massachusetts. My wife taught at Pittsburgh. I taught at Eastern Connecticut. A lot of the school districts around here. My wife took a job in Rock Hill and insisted I move with her, so I went down there. So I actually know your area very, very well. Okay? Anytime you're doing forecasts, you have to have assumptions. These are broad socio-economic demographic parameters, if you like, that you're using to build your models. I used to tell people, "I am a demographer, I am not a soothsayer." If I actually could read the future, I would be doing this for a living. I've been retired with my bond market killing years ago. I don't want to go through all of them. I do go through the three big ones. And probably the most important one is B, the 30-year fixed mortgage rate. Why is that so important? Because it dictates your housing market. Okay? People cannot move into a house in the district unless they can get a mortgage. And that's dictated by the mortgage rate. And we've seen the rates go back up to 5%, it's come back down. We're assuming they stay between 5 and 6, or don't break 6% over the 10 years of the forecast. Now, okay. Now, anytime you're using a percentage as an assumption, it's a tipping point. If it goes to 6.1, 6.2, stays there a couple weeks, drops back down, it's a slight drag. Goes up to 8, 9%, it's like hitting a brick wall. You're gonna see your housing sales drop off, both new and existing. Okay? Now, there's a bit of a generational issue in here as well. Those of us who are old enough to remember the '70s, '80s, '90s, into the 2000s, where the 30-year fixed rate was 8, 10, 12%. 5% sounds pretty good, right? Kids today who've seen nothing but 3, 3.5, 4, 4.5 for the last 10 years, 5% to 6% sounds like highway robbery. Okay? Another factor, you may have seen the report that came out, oh, it's been the last two months now, where the average college graduate comes out with $40,000 in student loan debt, which is true. What the article didn't tell you is the average college graduate, Mary is a college graduate, it's $80,000 in household debt. That's why your mortgage approval rate in the country, in New England right now, is on a run about 62%. They're loaded down with debt. The millennials aren't staying in apartments in urban areas because they love living there, it's because they can't get a house in suburbs. They can't afford the mortgage. So changes in the 30-year fixed rate has a really strong impact on the in-migration flow. The second one I want to cover is the unemployment rate. Okay? We're gonna assume it's below 6.5%. Now, it's been low for many years now, it will go back up eventually. But again, it's a tipping point. If it goes to 6.6, 6.8, stays there a couple months, drops back down, it's a slight drag. Go back to 10 years ago, when it was 8, 10, 12%, you're gonna see a slowdown in migration. Because if you don't have a job, you're not gonna buy a house. Okay? And the last one, and this is the one that people don't think about at all, existing home turnover rate. Okay? Most of your, and that's the backbone of your housing market. 90% of the housing market here in New England, here in this district, throughout the United States, is existing home sales. New home construction's only 10%. Been that way for decades. Even during the height of the building boom back in the last decade, it only got to about 80% nationwide. The buying and selling of existing homes dictates your in-migration flow. And most of that turnover is by people over the age of 60. Now, you'll see a slight increase or a slight uptick at 62, and another increase at 65. But most housing turnover doesn't occur until homeowners are in their 70s. It's not retirement that triggers downsizing. It's the death of one of the spouses, or both of them lose the ability to drive. Okay? At that point, then they're gonna downsize something different. People talk about snowbirds going down to the south and all that. That's only about 12% of the population. Most people, when they retire and downsize, stay within 50 miles of their community. In fact, a lot of them try to stay in their own community.
Right.
They don't want to go anyplace else. Don't bother moving to South Carolina, they don't want you down there either. So it's a, that's a big, big issue in the South right now. But if I know the percentage of homeowners in an area and their age structure, I now have a proxy variable on how many homes are gonna go on the market in the next 10 years, and that will dictate your housing. Now, the most important variable, demographically, going forward to population for enrollment, surprisingly, it's not fertility, it's not migration, it's your age structure. Where is your population distributed throughout the life course? This is a population pyramid, as we call it in demography, and this is the 2010 census. I know, it's nine-year-old data, what possible good can it be? Well, two things. This whole process is like balancing your checkbook. You have to have an opening balance, and the last census is the best one you're gonna get. And secondly, it can tell me what you should have done over the last eight years. We can then correlate those changes to what actually happened in your population. And they're pretty easy to read. Okay? That 0 to 4 bar, that's your preschool. 5 to 9's elementary, your middle, your high school. 20 to 34 years old, what we refer to as family formation ages. About 80% of all births occurred women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old. Despite what you've read in the popular press lately, fertility rates in this country haven't changed much in the last about 40 years. It's stayed a nice, tight 10% band between 1.7 and 2.0 women per children per lifetime. If you want to know what a .7 kid looks like, go to Ohio State. They have a lot of them over there, so. Said the Bowling Green graduate. Okay? When you see changes in the number of births in an area, it's not due to changes in the birth rate. It's due to changes in the number of women in prime childbearing age. If you don't have women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old, you're not gonna have that many births. Okay? 35 to 54 are the ages where most people have kids in school. Okay? There are exceptions to that. I'm one of them. I was a first-time father at 40. So my son was, graduated high school, I was 58. Everybody told me what a nice, well-behaved grandson I had. But there wasn't very many of us, but, you know. Now, interestingly, 55 to 69, I would refer to as the empty nest ages. And this is where it really befuddles people. The Smith family still lives in the same house they've been in for the last 25 years down the road. But 10 years ago, there was four people in that household. Today, there's two. Because Cumberland is suffering from what I refer to as the curse of the successful school district. What is the curse? High graduation rate, grades are good, engaged community, board, administration, everything's running great, you know? Kids graduate, get accepted to college, they move away, and they don't come back. For every two high school seniors that graduate, move away, don't come back, you need one new household to move in to replace their lost fertility. Okay? That's the plus in the minus, you work both sides of the equation here. The fastest-growing household type in this district for the last 10 years and the next 10 years will be empty nest households. Most of the households in this district don't have school-age kids in them. Okay? And then 70 and over, we call the turnover ages. Now, you can see two things, or a couple things, right off the bat with this age pyramid. Okay? You're going to see an increase in the number of households turning over, particularly the next 10 years. This wave here in their 60s are now in their 70s. They're gonna start turning over, even though the age of downsizing has been creeping up over the last couple, four, five, six years, from early 70s to mid-70s. The increase in empty nest households will still be pretty brisk, it'll be slowing down. But the bigger issue here, notice how the 0 to 4 bar is smaller than the 5 to 9. Okay? Refer, this is the dearth. When people see new households or new families move into their districts, either into apartments, or houses, or new construction, or whatever, they instinctively, they want to add it to what they already have, not realizing the cohorts coming in behind it are smaller. This is very, very common pattern in a suburban school district. Okay? As a matter of fact, if no one had moved into the district between 2010 and 2015, and you were just left to your own demographic devices, your elementary enrollment would have dropped by 600 students. Because the cohorts coming in behind it, 0 to 4 in 2010, are now 5 to 9, kindergarten through 4th grade, 2015. That's a 600-student deficit. Now, you didn't do that. And that's how we can start building our age-academic migration models. Your enrollment actually went up slightly. So you must have had 600 kids plus born between '06 and 2010 move into the district. And that's how we can start generalizing an age-academic migration model. And you can do that because I've noticed, over my 30 years of doing this, that when a 3rd grader moves, they tend to take the whole family with them. You can make that leap of logic. So... But because you have so few people in prime childbearing age, this is a demographic dynamic that's been consistent in the district for over 30 years. You go back to 2010, or 2000, 2000, or the 1990 census, 1980, you always see this dearth in here. Because most of the household, housing units in the district are owner-occupied. Okay? These people were back in their 30s, you know, in the 2010 census, having kids. So it's gonna be going over. So you can see here, given your age distribution. Now, there's another factor, and I'll go through real quickly. We also refer to as your demographic fingerprint. Because no two geographic areas have the same size and shape and distribution of the population. And from this, you start looking at individual differences within your attendance areas. And if you're thinking about changing your attendance boundaries for your elementary school feeders, you want to kind of balance these trends out. So real quickly, I'll go through it. Here's Cumberland Hill. Okay? Not near as much of a deficit. People moving in in their 20s, but not near as heavy of a concentration in their 40s. Okay? Ashton, getting more like a pillar shape, you know? And so having some more young people in it. BF Norton, I don't know what's going on here. There's a whole bunch of young 40-year-olds in there. But again, not much of a deficit. The real outlier is community. Okay? And there's reasons for this, you'll see as I go through the presentation. Most of them are homeowners, very, very few people in prime childbearing age, and a very, very heavy deficit. When college students graduate and leave school, you don't come out of college and buy a house, you rent an apartment. Then you get married, you have kids. But most people don't want to raise their kids in an apartment. So when the oldest one gets to about five or six years old, they're starting to look for at least a starter home to move to. So those with the economic resources will move. Where they move to is areas that are overwhelmingly owner-occupied housing units, and you start seeing distributions like this. So unless a lot of turnover's going on, that's a lot of deficit for an area to move up in. And then Garvin, again, more of a pillar, but then you see a heavy concentration in the 40s, a lot of empty nesting there in this area. So each one of the attendance areas has its own unique characteristics. You have to be looking at those. And this is households with under 18 population, including preschoolers. Only about a 30-year households in 2010 census had under 18 populations. It's now down to about 30% and dropping. That's actually just slightly below the regional and national averages. This is why it's so hard for school districts to get bonds passed, because they're outnumbered 2 to 1 right off the bat. Two-thirds of the households don't have kids in them. Okay? Household population, and then persons per household. A very crude measurement here. Mom, dad, whatever the point is, is kids. See, your gross crude yield on housing use is about half a kid per household. Now, it does look like there's a lot of change between these, like 2.44, 2.37, it's only about .07 difference. It doesn't look like a lot. But when you multiply that by 3,000 housing, or households, it's about 200 kids. You know, so small changes in persons per household have a big impact on enrollment. Householders 35 to 54, 43% that's dropping. The good news, believe it or not, is over a quarter of your households are over 65. There'll be a lot of households in the district over the next decade that will be turning over. And that pace and magnitude, the distribution of that turning over will dictate your enrollment change. They will eventually turn over. If you don't have one spouse die, or both lose the ability to drive, you'll both eventually die. It's one thing I tell you, you know, one thing about forecasting. 20 years forward, most are gonna be dead. So it's just fact of life. Homeowners, 74% are homeowners. But look at the differences between the elementaries. You've got community at 93%. You've got Norton, the far south, at 57%. Huge distribution. Then we call this housing tenure. Big difference in dynamics here. Renters tend to be younger, because they're younger, they're poor, are still having kids, tend to have younger children, and move an average of 18 months. Homeowners tend to be older, wealthier, have completed their family formation, most of their kids are school age, and move an average of nine and a half years. So you have two different dynamics going on here. And so the dynamics of Norton and community could not be, you know, more different. Single-person households, about 25%. This is not unusual for New England. See, a lot of single-person households. The good news is, is 11% of them are single over 65. So that means they will be turning over relatively short-term. And again, a wide distribution between your attendance areas. Community, that surprisingly, is lowest at 16, and the rest are up in the high 20s. So again, single people tend to conjugate in apartment complexes. Now, this is my favorite data from 2010 census. This is the individual year of age. What we can do is we can correlate this with your actual population in the grades. And we do two things here. One is, see what it is, the differences between the areas, but also look for what we call the cohort effect. And the best one I see here is, yeah, here's Garvin. Okay, in 2010, 5-year-olds are kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th. In 2015, these are kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, age forward. But look at Garvin. 59, 61, is that 103, 108, down to 74. We call this the cold winter effect. You just have these spikes in your birth of one year. It's just, and so if you look at a one-year trend, where we don't do projections, "Oh, my God, we're up 40 students this year." Well, it's a Well, it's a one year abnormality. It's not growth or migration. Conversely, if you went the other direction, go from a hundred down to seventy, it's not people fleeing, you're just having this one big cohort going through the school. So then we can also look at sees the relative size of the cohort. It's calculated something called a market share. And this is the example at the district level. My apologies to the people in the audience, you probably, there's no way you can read this. What we do is take your actual enrollment, this is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. This cell here, two year olds in two thousand ten are now six years old in two thousand fourteen. So take your first grade enrollment that year and calculate a percentage of what it was, or the census count was. And as you go up, they're now second graders, third, fourth, they're now fifth graders this year. If the percentages go up, it's in migration. If it goes down, it's out migration. Okay? And this is again, how we can look at your age specific migration trends. And you can see in all of the columns, the percentages go up, you know, in each one of them. So again, it's a strong in migration flow into the district. Good existing home sales, apartment occupancy rate above ninety five percent, very, very strong in migration flow. But across the top are the totals, and look at the, look at the cohort sizes. If you add up the under one to four year olds, it's about thirty, about thirty one hundred, twenty nine hundred, it's about six hundred higher for the higher cohorts. Okay? That measures that deficit you have to fill in, because you're not, there's not enough births in the district every year to maintain your current level of K and one enrollment. So you have to have that immigration flow coming in. We do this for each one of your attendance areas, but we use the district as an example to show it. Okay? We've also geocoded your students. This is the good news for the district, and what we're looking at here is the number of kids that attend or live in an area, the ones that attend, and the ones that go to that school. The green number are the ones who both live and attend in their attendance area. These are the ones that live outside, move in, these are the ones that live in the area, move out. These numbers are very, very small. You have less than ten percent of your students attending elementary school outside of their assigned attendance area. That is a very, very low rate. The national average is closer to twenty percent. I've seen districts where it's high as thirty five to forty, which is just an absolute nightmare for transportation. But your, yours are very, very manageable. A lot of these are due to special programs or, or parental requests or whatever. But this is a very efficient distribution of your students. You don't have that many going to outs, uh, facilities outside their home attendance area. It also allows us to put the kids back in their home attendance area to better correlate our demographic trends, the actual residents of the district. So made a lot easier this time. Now, this is the actual population forecast, this is the district total as an example. I want to kind of go through, this is a, there's two ways to read this. You can follow an age group through time, it's like five to nine, see what they were in two thousand ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five, and thirty, see how that number of elementary age students change. Or you can follow a cohort through time. Zero to four becomes five to nine, ten to fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty four. Okay? These columns here are the components of change. The birth between ten to fifteen, fifteen, twenty, twenty, twenty five, twenty five, thirty. You'll notice there's a slight decrease in births, not because of change in the birth rate, but due to there's fewer women in prime childbearing age. You'll also notice the deaths go up, not because there's a plague here or anything, you just have more people than what we call in demography, prime dying age. I know we have to find a better term than that, that's what we're using right now. So your population's aging, and you can see that with your median age going from forty two to forty six. Median age is the point where half your population is older than that age, half is younger. So you can see here, median age of your population is beyond prime childbearing age. It's one reason why your births are dropping. Natural increase is the excess of births over death, you see it going negative. And this is not foreign immigration, as some in Washington would have you believe, is the big demographic trend in the country. It's the rise or the loss, I should say, of natural increase. We already have eight hundred counties in the United States with more deaths than births. Couple of years ago, West Virginia became the first state to go ZPG. Rhode Island was the second one about three years ago. Vermont went last year, Maine's going this year, and probably New Hampshire next year. We'll have five states with more deaths than births. My favorite example is Arthur County, Nebraska. A couple of years back, they had twenty, twenty five deaths and one birth. Awful how your population grew. Why? Because of a very aging population. Net migration for the period, that's net migration. See a four hundred number there? Well, there's more than four hundred people moving in. Well, there are. Your biggest in migration flows are between the ages of twenty five and forty four years old and zero to nine year olds. Your biggest out migration flows, not surprisingly, are eighteen to twenty two year olds and people over the age of seventy. If you look at the number moving in, subtract the number moving out, that's the net, with the bottom wash. Within about two years of graduation, eighty five percent of your high school seniors are out of the district. The people moving into the Cumberland School District, in most part, are not people who moved out as high school graduates. There's a great way to test this theory. This year, the classes of two thousand fourteen, oh nine, and oh four are having their five, ten, fifteen year reunions. Go to the reunions, talk to the alumni, and see how many of them still live in the district. If it's twenty percent, you're doing real well. Real well, probably closer to fifteen. The results of these population forecasts at the elementary level then drive the enrollment forecast, which again, you can't read in the audience, my apologies. But basically, what it's, comes down to a couple of key factors, slight increase in your enrollment over the next ten years, as long as the housing market holds up. Okay? For housing, house sales data, we use two sources. We use Zillow, we use Realty Track, because you can get it down to the parcel level. We've been tracking it for the last three years with the data. I like to have two data sources, both look at existing home sales, all that been on the market, what was sold for, how much, asking price, both cover foreclosures. Zillow's probably better for home sales, Realty Track is better for foreclosure. Anybody ever used Realty Track? Go home, you have a free promo, you type in realtytrack.com. We buy their data, but you can get a little free sample. Put your address in, and you get a little map of your, your neighborhood, and you can see who your friends and neighbors are behind on their mortgages. Great way to spice up next cocktail party. You know, it's just great stuff. It's free foreclose, hey George, you're four months behind the mortgage. What people don't realize is everything about your house is public domain data. In the old days, when I first started doing this, we used to have to go down to town halls or courthouses and all that and, and get them paper. It's all up on the internet now. There are no secrets anymore. So. The other factor I want to point out is, over the last four years, your graduating class has averaged about three hundred and ten students. Over the next ten years, it's going to average about three hundred and fifty. That's forty more students. And the analogy I use here is a bucket of water. Okay? If I have a bucket of water, I'm pouring water in the top, there's a hole in the bottom. As long as I'm pouring in faster, it's going out, the bottom level will rise. But if for some reason the hole in the bottom gets bigger, and it's now going out faster, and I'm pouring in and keep pouring at the same rate, the level will drop. Enrollment works the same way. At the district level, what's the size K one coming in, what's the size twelfth grade going out? So one, one reason, look at the model here, when I see the forecast, hmm, should be going up a little faster than I realized, oh, you've got bigger age, twelfth grade cohorts going out. So that will mute your growth a little bit. But the key point here is, not so much the new home construction, the new apartment construction, it's that turnover of existing homes. And that's the real wild card here, because Cumberland, like most of New England, most of the United States, has a horrible shortage of elder housing. Most people in the down, when it downsized, don't want to go someplace else, they want to stay in their own community. Okay? We're, we had a real shortage that in this country, and they're just now starting to catch up. You know? It needs to be affordable, it needs to be in the area where they're close to friends and family, things like that, and it needs to be cheaper. Downsizing only works if you're taking money out of the house, going someplace, buying something cheaper. And that's slowing down the whole process right now, which is why we think people are staying longer and longer in their homes. They don't have a place to go to. You know? Kids don't want them. You know? Can't afford to move south, because south's not cheaper anymore, I'll tell you that. Anybody look at properties down in the preferred areas in the south? You know, there's a whole bunch of nursing homes, but most people are still active in their sixties and seventies and their eighties. No reason to want to do that. There's just not enough smaller. So if you start building more elder housing, it might accelerate this process. But the bigger thing is the thirty year fixed rate staying definitely below six, but hopefully below five percent. If it's going above those two levels, you will see a slowdown, people will stay longer, if not because you're going to have buyers. Because there is a problem coming, if I can backtrack a little bit here. It's not just for this area, it's all over the country. Okay? Here's your housing market made simple. Here's your sellers, here's your buyers. Okay? And a macro aspect here, starting in about two thousand twenty three, for the first time in our country's history, we're going to have more people in the selling ages than we have in the buying ages. Never happened before. And it's, it's rolling across the country. I can give you some examples of places where it's already hit, like Buffalo, Detroit, Cleveland, Des Moines, places like that, where they've had more people selling than they got buying, and the home prices plummet. New England will probably be the last place to, to have this happen. But the wild card factor here is housing is so expensive, it's so much more expensive to live in New England per square foot than any place else in the country, including San Francisco. So that's, that's going to be a factor. But you're going to have a lot of people here, and let's see now, this wave here is now in their fifties. Probably in the next decade, they're going to start hitting the prime downsizing ages, and that's, that's going to be a wild card factor at it. So the variable we look at, and we do this for all our school districts, I will contact the, the district in September of nineteen, twenty, and twenty one, first three years afterwards, ask for your fall enrollments, we're doing evaluations, see how we're holding up. We'll compare it with our other variables and data, and see how we're tracking. Our margin of error is plus or minus two percent at the district level. We're usually within a half a percent. Couple of years back, we hit one in Indiana, right on, three years in, twelve thousand two hundred and forty eight, hit it around the nose. Worst thing ever happened to me, because now the district expects the same level of accuracy every subsequent year. Next year was off by nine students, they just really just wrecked me over the coals for it, so. Twenty five minutes on the nose. Questions? I know it's a lot of information to digest at one time, but.
I'm sure we got many, but I, I know Ryan made this requirement that we hire someone like you to help us with our eighty three million dollar bond proposal. Do you see, or maybe we'll get to it in your presentation, that what era, what schools we're going to need, need to add on to in regards to, you know, the way the housing trends are going to be? Or do you get that?
We do a lot of redistricting, we're doing about twenty districts right now for redistricting. The first thing I recommend to districts is, A, can you solve any of your problems through redistricting, which is much cheaper to do. People don't like it, but you know, if you've got space at one school, moving from another one, or move a program for that matter, it's much easier to do that. Once you've ascertained that, looked at your utilizations, used to be your distribution of students, then you start thinking about building programs or expansion programs, things like that. It's important to do it in stepwise progression. I'm Scottish, so I always pick the cheapest route first. So.
Well, we're Cumberland, we always pick the cheapest way first. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Bake sale to pay the demographer out, sorry, I see, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
So one of the things that I recall from our conversation about a month or so ago was you, you provided more detail about, you know, the, the, you know, the population trends in Cumberland, and you actually offered, based on your data, some recommendations, or, or, or actually, you, you drew some conclusions based on where you saw the population growing, and, and as a result, the schools that would be impacted by that increased population. So for example, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and again, I know you do this for lots and lots of school districts, so you may not recall specifically this, but one of the things that I recall is that you, based on the data, hypothesized that Cumberland Hill, for example, would, would show an increase in the number of, of school age children moving into that area.
Cumberland would, yeah, and.
Cumberland Hill, right.
Hills, yep. And one reason, because right here, they have one of the smallest preschool deficits. So if twenty five households move into Cumberland in, in a given year, it has a much bigger impact on your enrollment than, say, community, which has this huge deficit. You know? Community is the one that, that, because when you redistrict or move kids, people always say, well, we're doing it to, to right, use right size our distribution of students versus distribution of our seats. In the case of Cumberland, you also kind of want to right size your, your demographic trend, because community is such an outlier. You, you want to get more households in their twenties in that area, so you don't have this wild fluctuation and swing, where it's going to go like this and waves. Areas in the south, like particularly Norton's another one, much more stable, because it has a, a more even distribution of population across the life course, whereas community does not, it's, it's all heavy down in their fifties. Well, people in their fifties don't have a lot of kids. So you're, you're going to have this situation, so I would move some territory into community. One, because it makes it a deficit problem, and two, it's probably going to have the, the least amount, if, if any population enrollment growth in the future, unless they all start moving out at once. So, so Cumberland would go, and you want to probably take it out of. Of course, you've got geographic problem too, is the way the district's shaped, you know, it's like an ice cream cone.
So just to add, and then, I don't know, forgive me for, for dominating here, but like right now, community school is significantly larger than all of the other elementary schools. Right? So there are approximately six hundred thirty students, K five, at community school. And there are at least two hundred more students there than the next largest elementary school. So, you know, one of the things that we, you know, have talked about, and, and, you know, like right now, they're maxed. Like, they're almost beyond maxed, space wise. So we're, we're struggling with how to, you know, deal with that issue. So do you have any recommendations for how we could address that issue now? As opposed to, excuse me, down the road from now?
You have any special programs up there right now?
At, at community? There are a couple of special programs, but I don't know that there is a significant population of, of students that are busting to that school to, you know, that, you know, are occupying a significant amount of space. Excuse me?
Wouldn't have taken a section. Well, one of the things that we did not have in this is we didn't have your building capacities in the study. So you, you can do, first thing you do is, is analysis by building, and see how your utilization is going to change over the next ten years, given the forecast. And that's where you start making decisions like that. You know, you, you do your due diligence on this. You, you can speculate at this time, there's, there's definitely changes you can make. But there's also things like transportation, neighborhood schools, dispersion of race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status, things like that. If you just look at the one issue of, of capacity versus number of students in the area, well, that's usually the most important one, but you want to kind of look at them all, all together. But yeah, you could do that, but you have to see what you. could do that, but you have to see what your utilizations are right now going into the future. So you have to get all the information at your disposal to do that. And I have no idea what your school capacities are at this point. But given your population trends, yeah, you could definitely, definitely move some students around and alleviate problems you have, because the trends are not equal across your five attendance areas. Clear as mud? That's all I've got, so.
Yeah, just so, so in the next three years, you'll contact the school district. We'll give you the enrollment numbers each fall, so you can check your projections. If the school district got you those building capacity numbers, could you kind of project out what you think the capacity in those areas would be first?
You could do a utilization analysis. We would just overlay the forecast on your current building capacities.
Right. I mean, we know one of the community school has, what, four or five cafeteria runs, you know?
Six.
Six.
Yeah.
So we know, you know, six times a day, we got to schedule lunch, which obviously doesn't help, you know, so.
That's usually the factor people forget about is if, you know, you add classrooms to a building, you're not changing the core areas, you know. And that's come back to bite many school districts over the years, is you start running, six is kind of excessive, by the way, so.
Right.
Start serving lunch at, what, nine, stop at two?
Probably, yeah. I mean, so, I mean, I think your demographic study will help the building committee that the town has formed, and help the school department figure out where we're going to have our growth in the areas, and where we may need to add additions to going forward with what happens here in Cumberland.
I can throw in a free tip, how to get your bonds passed.
Well, the bond got passed.
Oh, it did?
That's, you know, that's, you know, that's a good thing. It's just funding it down the road will be, that'll be the struggle for everyone in Cumberland to manage that, you know, properly going forward. So it'll be broken down. I guess our plans will be broken down by district and government. Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
What about different variables like new construction or buildable lots? Is there any way to kind of forecast that?
If it's not, you could do what we call a scenario forecast, and for a lot of districts, economic building, whatever the case may be. Someone comes in and drops four hundred new homes in here, what impact will it have? You can do that. That's pretty easy to do for new construction. For mine, if it's not planned, planned and approved, I don't put it in, you know, because developers will say, well, I'm thinking about doing this, you know. Well, I've been thinking about losing twenty pounds for the last twenty years, and, you know, I wait till I see real proof first. But areas that, like, we do a lot of school districts where they've had, like, auto plants move in or things like that, or they've had, you know, particularly in the south, where they just do track development all over the place. We do scenario forecasts for that, but again, I go back to your fundamental issue. Ninety percent of your housing market, ninety-five percent here, it's going to be existing home sales. So I'd check SIL every month, like I do. That's going to tell you, you know, what the real thing is going to be. If that's, you could build four hundred houses a year here in Cumberland. If you don't sell existing homes at all, your population is going to drop. That's how important it is. When people thought that Amazon Two or HQ Two was going to come to their town, they all just went nuts with that. We had more people calling us up for, what if they move here, you know?
Right. Anyone else have a question for the doctor? Well, Dr. McGivens, thank you for doing the study. I know you're well-respected in Rhode Island. You came highly recommended from Ride as well, and I'm sure the building committee may have questions down the road in regards to school committee plans, and I'm sure we'll be reaching out to you.
Well, if there are any other questions come up, please just give me a call. We'll be happy to, I don't know how he can always track me down wherever I'm at, you know, but he does. So just give me a call. We'll see if he can answer for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on new business is a vote to rescind certified, non-certified, non-renewal dismissal recommendations. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Administration brings forth the recommendation to rescind several of the groups of dismissed teachers. I'll read through each group, and it's my understanding that the committee would like to vote on each group separately.
Correct. And this is only for the tenured teachers at the moment, then we will be having another meeting for the non-tenured positions as well.
This is rescission of the groups of teachers who are tenured, who were sent a dismissal notice last week. Non-tenured teachers still remain in a non-renewal status, and once we have confirmed all of these, we can move on to the CTA PSE matrix, and from there can also begin to rescind some of the non-renewed, non-tenured teachers.
Great. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So the first group is all tenured guidance counselors. There were fourteen who received dismissal notices.
Need a motion to rescind that?
Motion to rescind.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello. Second by Mrs. Waters and Mr. Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to rescind all tenured social, excuse me, social workers who received dismissal notices. There were two of them.
So a motion to rescind all tenured social workers, which are two? Motion by Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Waters and Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero.
Okay, we propose the rescission of eight of nine of the tenured world language teachers who were dismissed.
I need a motion on the rescinding of eight of the nine tenured world language teachers.
So moved.
By Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Waters. I'm sorry, Mr. Fiorello. And then second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero.
We propose the rescission of all tenured phys ed and health teachers, twenty-two in total.
Need a motion to rescind all the tenured PE and health teachers?
So moved.
By Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Bernardo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next is.
Propose to rescind all tenured art teachers. There were eight in total.
Rescinding all.
Motion to rescind.
By Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next.
Propose to rescind all tenured business teachers. There were three in total.
We have a, I need a motion to rescind all the business teachers.
So moved.
By Mrs. Friedman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero.
Propose to rescind six of the eight tenured music teachers.
We have a motion, I need a motion for the rescind six of the eight tenured music teachers.
So moved.
So boom by Mrs. Friedman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero.
Propose to rescind all tenured reading interventionists. There were eleven in total.
I need a motion to rescind all eleven reading interventionists.
Motion to rescind the reading interventionist.
Motion by Mrs. Waters, second by Mrs. Bernardo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next is.
Propose the rescission of seven of eight tenured math interventionists.
Motion to rescind seven of the eight tenured math interventionists. I need a motion.
Motion to rescind.
Motion to rescind by Mrs. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernardo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next is, do we need to vote on this one, the flex base one?
Steve?
No. Okay, next is. Next is to remove the BF Norton Behavior Support Coach? Right, Superintendent? Okay. All right, so the ELLs all set. We have additions. That's it? Okay, so that's it on the CTA. I know there will be a few matrix job pools where they'll have positions to bid into that may have been, you know, changed here, so that will continue in regards to the CTA until they're done with the job pools.
That's correct. So any resulting opening positions will be posted in the PSE matrix for CTA. Each round of the matrix needs to remain open for six days.
Okay. And then we do have additions that will, that these teachers can bid into as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, next is the, we have two for the ITSKI, so.
Yes, the administration proposes removal of the Human Resources Secretary position.
And I need a motion in regards to the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a recommendation? Mr. Hess makes a motion to vote no on that recommendation. Do I have a second? Mr. Superintendent, can we table this for now, or do we need to vote on this? Because there's the ITSKI pool.
Yeah, it's entirely up to the committee if you would like to table this for the discussion.
Will this affect the ITSKI?
It will, it will affect the ITSKI job pool. The person in this position will need to be notified in time to be able to bid on positions in that job pool.
So I will second Mr. Hess's motion to not vote on this recommendation to remove the Human Resource Secretary position.
To not vote or to vote to?
To reject.
To reject it.
To reject. Yes, to reject.
Let me modify my original. I make a motion to reject the administration's proposal to remove the Human Resources Secretary position.
And I second that. Is there any discussion? Mr. Fiorello. That's fine. Mr. Fiorello will abstain, because he wasn't here for any of the discussion that the public comment had, so on that. So any other discussion? Here in, all in favor of rejecting? Say?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, five to zero, with Mr. Fiorello not voting, because he wasn't here. Okay, next is the.
Proposal to rescind all of the five paraprofessionals from BF Norton School that were dismissed.
Okay. Make a motion, I need a motion to rescind. Motion by Mr. Hess.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Bernardo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next one.
The next involves non-union positions. I don't believe that we have to vote on those.
We don't, no, we don't have to vote on that one either. Okay.
That completes the list.
Thank you. So, again, for Mr. Fiorello, who wasn't here, we have to have the matrix. Could go three, four, five, six rounds for the CTA employees, and the ITSKI as well, if they have to get involved in something like that. And then we are planning on coming back on June twenty-seventh. Are you available?
I will make myself.
Mr. Fiorello is available. So we have, we will have enough people for a quorum to do more recalls and do the non-tenured teachers as well, once the principals have their list ready. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. We will make sure that we get the, all of the information necessary to be ready on that date.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is, I don't know why this is here against, is vote on non-certified, non-renewal dismissal recommendations. That's already been taken care of. BNC with the same. All right, discussion and a vote to rescind withdrawal from the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative and to authorize chair or his designate to communicate this to the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative. Previously, the school committee voted to leave the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, and because of budgeting decisions, and we're not sure the direction of the collaborative, I have asked that this be put back on the agenda and rescind it. The collaborative will accept us back in as a voting member if we decide to vote for this tonight. So I would make that motion, since it was my recommendation that we go back, and I need a second on that. Second by Mrs. Waters.
Mrs. Friedman.
Mrs. Friedman, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Here and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to nothing. Mr. Allen, could you communicate that to the attorney that we did want, we took a vote, positive vote, to come back into the collaborative? With the superintendent? All right, thank you. Next is discussion and a vote to approve the new policy, second reading I seventeen homework policy. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, this is a policy that was, the first reading was two weeks ago, and per our policy, well, new policies have to have two readings before we can vote to approve. And as we had talked about once before, the homework policy had a lot of work done to it by Mr. Damana's team, as well as some of the high school folks. And I would make a motion, I guess we're just approving the reading, so I would just ask for the second, for the reading in the record. Where are we actually going to approve? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the new I seventeen homework policy. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bernardo. Need discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Item number FD two and D eight have tabled to the next meeting. Next, discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. SC PR six twenty nineteen oh four, removal of existing boilers, pumps, and installation of new energy-efficient boilers, pumps, energy management system at Cumberland High School to E and E Systems. Mr. Hess?
Okay, so we have a number of resolutions here. Let me just go through here. So this is a resolution to authorize the engagement of E and E Systems to replace the boilers at Cumberland High School. The boilers are over twenty years old at this point. We have two that were in a failed status this past winter. Thankfully, it was a mild winter, and the existing or the other boilers were able to keep up. We did, according to Mr. Prignano, actually have a failure of the domestic hot water boiler just this week. So these systems are due for replacement. We did have a discussion about this upstairs, and this passed along a two to zero vote. I would note for the record that this resolution is written in such a manner that this is subject to approval by the town council on the fiscal side of things, since they'll be picking up the tab on this. So I would move passage.
Mr. Hess moves passage of SC PR six twenty nineteen oh four. Mr. Hess moves passage of SC PR six twenty nineteen oh four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters and Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? I would just like to point out that the mayor did attend the meeting tonight at fiscal in regards to this matter, and I'm sure this is going to be going to a new or past building committee to resolve the issues. So I just want everyone to know the mayor did come and speak about this tonight, about following the correct process going forward. So with that said, Mr. Hess made a motion for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Next is SC PR six twenty nineteen oh five, network backup appliance and Chromebook purchase through Hub Technical Services.
Okay. So this is in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents. It's made up of two individual items, forty-four thousand, two hundred and four dollars for Chromebooks, and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and two cents for a district backup appliance for server backups. This passed upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Didn't happen. Mr. Hess, you make a motion to approve?
Correct.
And I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? I'd just like to note that it is budgeted in this year's budget. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Next is SCR twenty nineteen twelve, fiscal year twenty nineteen amended school budget.
Okay. So this is a little bit of budget housekeeping that we have to perform. This would account for the three hundred thousand dollar transfer that we made to the town, actually as part of our payment of bills this week. That was the three hundred thousand to the town to assist them in getting under the four percent levy cap. This passed upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Waters. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Mr. Hess?
SCR two thousand nineteen thirteen. This is another fiscal year in two thousand nineteen budget amendment. This is to move the five hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance and into the budget for accounting purposes to take care of pool repair, and I would move passage.
Mr. Hess moves passage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it six to zero. Next, Mr. Hess?
SCR two thousand nineteen dash fourteen. This is owner's representation services for the installation of the aforementioned energy-efficient boilers, pumps, and energy management systems at Cumberland High School to Colliers International in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand dollars. This is part of RIDE requirements in order to meet our reimbursement rates. This passed upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? I would just like to point out that the payment for this would come from a grant that RIDE had given the school district to pay for this. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. SCR twenty nineteen fifteen is being tabled, Mr. Hess?
Correct.
Okay. Next is SCR twenty nineteen sixteen, school meal price increase.
Okay. So, apologies. So there was a proposal to increase the cost for the elementary and middle school lunches by twenty-five cents. That would raise them to two dollars and sixty cents for the elementary and two dollars and seventy-five cents for the middle school. I did request that SEDEXO provide us with a survey of different districts to do some comparisons. For the record, the high school would stay the same in this proposal. Looking at it, we haven't raised the price in at least four years, possibly longer than that. And looking at the comparisons, if this were to pass, Cumberland would go from the sixth least expensive on the elementary side to the tenth, and that would bring us in line with currently Burrville, Situate, North Smithfield, and Portsmouth. On the middle school side, we would go from sixth least expensive to ninth, bringing us in line with Jamestown, Newport, Little Compton, and Block Island. So this, obviously, no price increases is desirable, but at the same time, food costs go up, labor costs go up. We have to stay current with those, given the fact that it hasn't raised in a number of years, and we're still towards the bottom of the list. I think it's appropriate. This did pass upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of the school meal price increases. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Waters. Any discussion? Here and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Next is SCR twenty nineteen seventeen, school meal collects, payment collection services agreement with FH Khan and Associates.
Okay. So this is following the policy that was passed, an amendment with regard to overdue lunch balances. This is engaging FH Khan and Associates to handle past due balances where the people have not reached out to the district to arrange other approaches to repay their overdue balances. Obviously, this is not something that we want to do, but given the expense that we're looking at with a forty-seven thousand dollar overdue lunch balance, and obviously the district's existing budgetary concerns and the policy that was passed, this is something that we feel needs to be done. This passed upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of SC R twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen dash seventeen to have a collection agency, FH Khan and Associates engaged with the schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? I would just like to say it's a sad day that we have to go to a collection agency to do this. I was going through my files the other day, and I found records when I was on the fiscal that showed our collection was nine thousand dollars is what we only had overdue district-wide before we adopted the new policy in regards to the lunch with the shaming. And, you know, what has happened is a shame on us. The parents have ignored us. They get many letters, emails, they've gotten a letter from our attorney as well, and they've just tossed to the side and said, we're not going to deal with it. And it's a shame that we have to hire a collection agency to get people's attention. And I had originally voted against this back in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. I voted against this because I was afraid we would have to go to a collection agency. And here we are, you know, in twenty nineteen. So to our parents out there that may get this in the newspaper or see this message, please reach out. We're workable. The school district doesn't want to send you to a collection agency. It might hurt you down the road, you know. Let's resolve it directly. If you can't afford it, tell us you can't afford it, and we'll work something out. But we've got to do something, and we've got to get your attention because you're just ignoring us for the last few years and laughing at us right now about this situation. So with that said, any other, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Damanica said. This, when we created the new policy two years ago, we specifically put the collection part into the policy, and we've held off for two years to get to this point, trying to work with parents and trying to get them to understand that they actually need to pay this bill. And again, we will always work with parents that are having trouble. We will, if parents are having any kind of financial hardship, we will wipe out their balance. But that's not what the case, that's not what's happening. This is really just people not wanting to pay, so.
All right. So I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Next is SCR twenty nineteen eighteen, it's the fiscal year twenty twenty amended school budget. We will take that up on June twenty-seventh. At that time, we've given the, just got approved this past Monday by the town council, and the mayor has time to look at it as well. But we expect to reconcile our school budget with the town appropriations on that day and also do the recalls. So I have personal recommendations, so, miss? Personnel. It's a long night.
It certainly is.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation due to disability retirement of Henry Arugio, custodian at Garvin Memorial School with an effective date of June fourth, two thousand nineteen, after twenty-three years of service.
Need a motion to accept the personnel recommendation. Mrs. Waters makes a...
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Deborah Busque, custodian nights at Community School effective May seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Waters?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is school committee, school liaison reports. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Any guys that, he has nothing to say. I just say to everyone, thank you. We had a...
Well, I do have something to say.
Oh, you do? Go ahead.
This afternoon, we had the pleasure of the graduation ceremony from McCourt Middle School, and Mrs. Bernardo was honored for her stellar work as a PTO president over the last three years. And I, what they had said, I believe Dr. Masterson had brought up, and I don't see him. He mentioned how fundraising was at an all-time high. We had more programs for kids after school, field day for kids, all great things for the kids. And although she had help, it was really all spearheaded by Mrs. Bernardo. And I think it's important to note that when her son had the promotion ceremony at fifth grade leaving BF Norton, she was similar, similarly, she was honored the same way. So just congratulations to her.
I would just like to say thank you to all the teachers and so forth for this school year. It's been a tough one. It's been a tough budget season. So our teachers out there, professional or non-professional, give us a little time. We'll get this resolved by June twenty-seventh in regards to the recalls and so forth, and because you're all valuable, and no one wants to get that noticed like it did this year. So bear with us. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, any votes to go into executive session?
No, we do not, Mr. ...
Here and none. I need a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Waters and Mr. Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Thank you, everybody.